Hi, my name is Bob Hiss. I'm joined here by Dave Humphries. I'm your current Milton Town Moderator and Dave is the Chair of the Warrant Committee. If you've ever turned into this episode or show before, I started a few years ago having a pre-town meeting recording where I had an opportunity to sit down with the Chair of the Warrant Committee and understand some of the articles that were going to be presented in the warrant, which is now available either at some of the public town halls, public buildings, it's available on the town's website, and if you're a town meeting member, you should have one in your home now. So we have a special town meeting coming up on Monday, December 4th with overflow dates of Monday, December 11 and Tuesday, December 12. Please note that's not the normal same week overflow. It's now 4th, 11th, and 12th if we need them. And it's a special town meeting where we've got eight different articles that have been submitted by citizens and the Select Board, and the purpose of tonight's conversation with Dave is to understand what the Warrant Committee thought of these, hear some of their thinking behind their recommendations, and then help prepare everyone who wants to be in the know about what's going to happen on December 4th when we have our town meeting. So with that, Dave, good to see you again.
It's good to see you, Mr. Hiss.
You've been busy, I see, working on a warrant.
Indeed, indeed, working on the warrant.
So I think there's been a lot of buzz in town about MBTA zoning and the rapid transit community, and it's been in the Milton Times. Perhaps you could just give us a quick story, what's the purpose of Article 1, and then we'll get to the recommendation of the Warrant Committee.
Right. So it hasn't just been a buzz in our town, it's been a buzz throughout the state, and I wouldn't be surprised if the rest of the country is looking at what we are doing in Massachusetts, in the Commonwealth with regards to the problems that we have with housing, which is real. There's not enough of it. And so the Commonwealth has passed a law requiring towns that are serviced by the MBTA to increase their housing stock, basically. We are one of those towns. And so the Commonwealth promulgated guidelines through an office giving us direction with regards to what we're required to do to zone in order to be in compliance with that law. And so that brings us to Article 1, because the Commonwealth had given us a deadline of this year, of December 31st, 2023, to pass with us in Milton, it's a town meeting, because we have town meeting. The towns that do not have town meeting, it would be their city council.
City Council, right.
Right?
Their cities, right.
So to pass and to have in place the MBTA zoning. So for Milton, the zoning that we're looking at, and if you look in the warrant, there's a map, it's a really good map, and it was created by our town planner, Tim Juwinski, and the Planning Board, working together. And it's pages 36 and 37 of the warrant. And as a starting point, you look at where the T-stops are in town, and as a starting point, they want us to put housing that's a half a mile from each of these T-stops. So you see these circles. And what you notice right away when you look at Milton is half the circle is in Boston. So we believe that a reading of the MBTA Communities Act for this zoning would require us to put 2,461 units inside these circles, which is tricky, because if the whole circle was in Milton, you'd be able to spread it out. So it was quite a challenge, quite a challenge, to figure out how to do this zoning in such a way that we could preserve the character of our town. So Article 1 reflects the Select Board article, which in several pages, if you look at this, this is zoning. This is a lot of zoning. Table of Dimensional Standards, Exceptions, Renewable Energy Installations, 3.23D5, Table of Dimensional Standards, Number of Parking Spaces, Number of Spaces for Bicycles. There's a lot of zoning here. There's a lot of work that went into this, into this article. The challenge at the Warrant Committee was that this was the Select Board article. The timing here is difficult. It sounds like a long time, and I put the dates in the timeline is in our comment, is that the law was passed on, the law was passed, but then, and the town was given a certain amount of time to zone. So the law was passed in January 2021, but the guidelines did not come out until August 10th, 2022. They were amended twice. So these guidelines that came out on August 10th, 2022, little over a year ago, would require us to zone for a 25% increase in total housing units, the most comprehensive zoning that the town has contemplated in almost 100 years. It's general agreement that the town needs zoning, it's general agreement that the town needs more housing, but this is, that gives us 16 months to do it, so.
That's because there are, I think, probably 150 some odd towns that are MBTA cities and towns, but 12 are rapid transit, of which Milton has been deemed one, and because of that, we have to have, as one of the 12 rapid transit towns, this has to come up for a vote by December 31.
Right.
Like, I think Brookline had their vote, I think there've been a couple, although all the 12 towns are probably having them right now. So that's why we're on this accelerated timeline versus other towns that have more time to go consider.
This is true.
Right, okay.
Because we were designated as rapid transit due to the unique nature of our high-speed rail that we have in our town. And so we were given this time, but what we saw in the Warrant Committee was that the Planning Board had been diligent, worked very carefully with the town planner in putting this together, but, and we put in our comment, work that they had done, hiring consultants, having their hearings, looking at the districts, looking at the map. It's really something to watch them, the level of knowledge that the Planning Board has, that Tim has, it's like, when you would watch them talk about the zoning, they knew the maps property by property. They could sit there at the table and say, I know that house that you're talking about, I know that that house is a carriage house behind it, I know it looks like it's a big lot, but it's not really a big lot, and it's weird. That's the level of detail that goes into this. It looks like the Planning Board, in working this issue, was able to work on the Select Board article, but when it came time for the Planning Board itself to put forward an article as the Planning Board, they did not have the time to do so, and were not able to. So this is a Select Board article, we don't have a Planning Board article, and to date, the Planning Board is not in favor of this article. There has not been a vote by the Planning Board that supports this article.
Was that a factor in the Warrant Committee's recommendation?
I believe it was. I believe it was, I believe it was the most important part of the Warrant Committee's article. We could go down the rabbit hole with regards to whether we're a rapid transit community. We could go down a rabbit hole with regards to what are the risks of non-compliance with regards to how much grant money are we going to get, not get, are we going to be sued by the Attorney General, are they going to send in the National Guard to force us to zone? This actually came up, like, we can go down a rabbit hole on all that, but at the end of the day, and I put it in the comment, is that the Planning Board just needs more time to complete their work. To quote, "We therefore suggest to town meeting that the Planning Board be allowed to complete their work and further collaborate with the Select Board to do what is in the best interests of Milton." That, I think, is our bottom line, is that this zoning, most important zoning that our town is doing in 100 years, the further important interest that we have in our town and our Commonwealth has in general, just needs more time. And that we did not want to vote no. There was never any serious discussion at the Warrant Committee of a no vote. There was general agreement that it's true, that the town needs zoning, that we need more housing, we need more types of housing across the board, we want to continue to welcome people to our wonderful town, but that this just needed more time. And so rather than, that's my general sense, there never was any support for a no.
Okay.
And so that's essentially the bottom line here, is that we wanted to give the Planning Board more time to draft an article, their intent having been explained to us as to bring something at the annual town meeting that would be in compliance with the statute.
In May of '24.
In May of '24.
Got it, okay. Incidentally, the town administrator, Nick Milano, is sending out a letter to all the town meeting members where they're going to be holding a town meeting member information session, I believe it's Wednesday night, the 29th, or Tuesday, the 28th. You'll get an email from the town clerk, either today or tomorrow, and it's open to anyone, but the specific point is to be able to hear, have town meeting members ask their questions of, in particular, the town planner, Tim Juwinski, any members, I think, of the Select Board or Planning Board that are going to be there. So it's a good chance to get those questions out early if they're technical in nature, and hopefully take them off the floor of town meetings so we can get things done a little faster. Okay, so that's number one, got it. Number two also looks like the same look and feel as a zoning article. What's different in two than number one?
Right. So Article 2 zoning, it's with regards to MBTA communities, multifamily, overlay district in Milton Central Avenue. So again, back to that map, there's the district at the Milton Central Avenue, and what the intent of Article 2 was, is in that MBTA district to establish mixed use. So to make that district mixed use, subject to the zoning here in the article, in order to, and it's as of right, to permitted as of right, to develop that area as mixed use for commercial, there being a great need in town to have more commercial. Now, what we had recommended here is sort of a contingent, a contingent yes, much like the Warrant Committee did at the last annual town meeting with regards to the Article 97 land swap. In that case, the Warrant Committee had voted a no recommendation with regards to the overall scheme of an Article 97 land swap for purposes of building a school. There was a second article with regards to taking some certain properties by eminent domain. There we said, we have made a no recommendation with regards to Article 1, so we would recommend a no.
This is last May.
This is last May. We recommended no, a no. However, if the town sees it a different way, we would want to support the town, support the town following that vote. So we're doing the same thing here, is we're saying that we support Article 2 for the mixed use permitted as of right if first Article 1 is voted in the affirmative by the town. If that MBTA zoning becomes our zoning, then, otherwise, we would want it to refer back to the Select Board for further study, see how that goes.
So your recommendations, 1 and 2, should probably be passed together or referred back together, that's the sense of the Warrant Committee?
Right.
Okay, understood. And 2 is separate, is it because of the emphasis on mixed use in this commercial district? Is that why it's separate from these others that are more multifamily and residential districts, in essence?
I think that that's a good answer, Bob. There's reasons why they might want to pull this article out of Article 1. There's a question with regards to whether Article 1 needs a one-half or a two-thirds vote at town meeting. It's a possibility that Article 2, if it was part of the overall zoning, could trigger a two-thirds, where the rest of it might be a simple majority.
Okay.
And that's one way of looking at it. There might just be other reasons, just for simplicity's sake, but it does allow the town, it does allow the community, it highlights this issue for us, so.
Got it. And I'll be speaking to the town council and getting clarity on the vote requirements. I've read, it's Chapter 48, Section 5, so I've been getting into the Mass General Law, which is a surprising place to find your town moderator, but I've been read through it. By the way, I've heard of some questions that came up. By the way, zoning articles can be created by the Select Board, or by a citizen, or by a Planning Board, per Mass General Law. So the Select Board is a perfectly fit organization to be able to go submit zoning laws. There's notices of hearings that have to be held, and those have been held. There's notices on whether reports have to be written, and all the town departments so far are following the Mass General Law, per my read. And I'll just get the last question answered to verify the other vote count, but I'm fairly certain it's 50% on Article 1, in any case, from my read. All right, so that's zoning on Article 2. Now we've got something that land swap looks like again, or rather, land conservation, I shouldn't say swap, but conservation. Article 3, what's this about?
Right, so these are five parcels that are between the Ponset River and Cortland Circle, Thistle Avenue, Whitman Road, and Riverside Avenue. That's what you see when you're driving out on granite to the expressway, and you're going up the ramp, and you look to the right, and you see all that marshland. That's those parcels.
That's all town-owned land?
Right, yeah. So it's all town, and it's owned by the town, so it would be administered by the Select Board as general municipal. And this is just, one way of looking at it is housekeeping. It really should be under the Care, Custody, Management, and Control, the Conservation Commission. There's a million different ways that is conservation land, it's wetlands, it's protected, it's estuaries, and it just looks like it's time to get that to the Conservation Commission. So it is the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, the town vote to transfer those properties to the Care, Custody, Control, the Conservation Commission.
And it sounds like you are in favor of that of the Warrant Committee.
Yes, we are in favor of that.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay. Article 4, School Building Committee. Looks like the project is proceeding, and they're coming back for some additional funds to keep it moving, is that the essence of 4?
Yes.
Okay, any controversy or discussion on that one?
Well, there is discussion, but I don't think there's a lot of controversy. The town is moving forward on the building of a school, the School Building Committee. And you can watch their meetings online, they're out there drawing up plans and doing all of the things that they need to do in order to be able to plan to build a school, and their request is $400,000 at this time. They came to us with their presentation of what their burn rate is, and what they expect to need, and it was the recommendation of the Warrant Committee that the town approve their request.
All right, very good. It's very similar to what we went through with the Fire Department, what we went through with the schools, probably 20 years ago.
Right.
So they're following the normal process, very good. Article 5 looks like kind of a supplemental appropriation, what's this for?
Right, so this was a request by the Select Board to put an additional $350,000 into the reserve fund. First, is expected that we have the money, is that we had a presentation by Nick Milano, who's indicating that based upon, you know, what they're expecting to be receiving can justify this, so what we're going to be receiving in revenues, expected revenues, can justify this, and that the reserve fund is a good place to put the money. One reason why we think it's a good place to put the money is that $140,000, I'm sorry, $110,000 was recently allocated to the Department of Public Works for a wood chipper, and that took down what was in the reserve fund from $250,000 to $140,000. And so then this 350 could help beef that up, and that the reserve fund is a good place to have this money now for unforeseeable, unforeseeable such as the wood chipper.
It's some of the town's savings account, as it were, and they had the drawdown to have some repairs, now you want to go top it back up and restore it to a larger amount.
Yes.
Sounds like good financial management. Number 6, recording. I know this started out as a citizen petition, but I think the Select Board adopted it. What's the intent of number 6?
Right. So the intent of number 6 is transparency in government. The, thanks to our good friends at Milton Access Television, we have the ability to broadcast and record our public meetings, which are an important resource, and that's helpful to have an informed citizenry so that we can make good decisions at town meetings and hold our government accountable. And so the purpose of this article was to have all public meetings of elected public bodies, audio and/or video recorded, and they laid out the bodies subject to the law. But then it carves out bodies not required, such as meetings of subcommittees of the elected bodies.
Like the Finance Committee of the Select Board, or something like that, is, right?
Right.
Don't have to record that, okay?
Or the School Committee Budget Committee.
Right. Appointed bodies aren't included in this, it's just those few elected boards they listed up at the top.
Right.
Okay.
And so it was, this is, there's a lot to this, and, you know, we had an interesting conversation at the Warrant Committee about this, because there's a lot of interplay with regards to, you know, when can you go into executive session? There were concerns that were raised by the Board of Health, by the trustees of the cemetery, and sometimes in their meetings, things, people bring up very personal circumstances. For instance, the Board of Health will sometimes be talking about condemnation of properties, or things, people maybe have suffered some mental health, and so there were concerns about how to deal with that, and...
Was this about to protect some privacy of the citizens who were the subject of those discussions?
Right.
Not the privacy of the boards themselves, but of the topics there.
Right. So how to deal with that, you know, if you, so like, in some of these public meetings in our town, you could really be dealing with personal issues of people, and how to balance all that out. And then there was just also concern with regards to the Warrant Committee, that we wanted, that there was, it didn't go far enough, that the carve-out of the subcommittees of elected public bodies in the general sense to the majority on the Warrant Committee was that they should be subject to the recording of, they should be subject to it.
That the Warrant Committee should?
That the meetings of the subcommittees of the elected bodies...
I see, okay.
Should. Should be subject to audio and/or video recording, and should not be carved out.
Okay.
Right, and so, you know, there was a conversation about whether we should walk before we run here, you know, should we see how it goes first before we jump into recording everything, you know? We didn't have a problem running right into an Article 97 land swap, and we don't have a problem running right into the most comprehensive zoning that the town has done in 100 years in less than 16 months, so I just don't see how we can't record some of these little itty-bitty meetings that we have. We should just go do it. I think that that was the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, and maybe because of the issues that we've brought up here, we voted to refer it to the Select Board for further study along those lines.
Understood, okay. Article 7 looks like bylaws.
Right.
On the local historic district. So this is all separate from the MBTA and the overlay district, this is now about historic district, and it looks like it is in the Milton Village area, which is just a little bit south of the Central Avenue, right, Adam Street and the High Street area, right up in that?
Right.
Down at the bottom of the hill, okay?
Right.
So what's the intent of all this?
Right, so the intent of this is to establish a local historic district commission and a district, and the district is in Lower Mills. The district basically is, basically, is from High Street to the river, basically. And what they want to do with regards to in that district is to establish very strict zoning with regards to what can or cannot be done in that district to alter the buildings, et cetera, in a local historic district. They would establish a commission to administer that, and to develop their guidelines, and to develop enforcement, and to develop what penalties... what penalties, you know, non-compliance would carry.
So for example, if one passes, the multifamily MBTA zoning passes in Article One, this district is in one of those zones. So this is then providing historical protection for the buildings that are there after, even though it's going to be subject to by right multifamily zoning.
Right.
Got the idea?
Right, that's the idea.
Don't just tear down the buildings that are there so that you can put on multifamily, but have some controls and historical filter on the decisions.
Right, so they would have to comply with both.
Got it, got it.
And so our, and so there's a lot, again, there's a lot of zoning here. There's a lot. And the it was a recommendation of the warrant committee that this just wasn't ready yet for the special, for now, for December. That we are going to work with the local historic district study committee to review this and to get it to the town meeting in May. I know that they are in the process of scheduling public meetings with regards to this they're required to do. Because this is the type of, this would be the type of bylaw that would require public meetings, notification, et cetera, et cetera. So that process is underway. So our recommendation at this time was essentially, was, is defer it back to the local historic district study committee for further study. We, the warrant committee will work with them for whatever revisions are necessary. Again, it was the general, it was the intent of everyone on the warrant committee that this is a good idea. We want to have the local historic district, want to have the local historic district commit, commission to oversee it. We just could not approve it at this time.
Understood.
Or we could not give a recommendation to the town at this time.
Okay. I got it. Last one, Article Eight. It looks like it's a citizen's petition to transfer land to the Conservation Commission.
Right.
And I think this is, you might otherwise call this Pope's Pond. Is that right?
Right, it's interesting. So it's Pope's Pond and it was a citizen's petition to vote to transfer the 41.4-plus acres of land shown on the map, commonly referred to as Pope's Pond, to the Care, Custody, Management and Control of the Conservation Commission. It's my, it's my understanding that the reason, a reason why this came forward was because there was concern that it was supposed to have been previously done at some earlier date, but was never transferred over and that this was to cure that. Whether that is in fact the case or not, it was the position of the warrant committee is our recommendation that the town vote no on this article in that whether or not that is the case, that it was supposed to have in the past been transferred over to the Conservation Commission, is that at the last annual town meeting in May, one, it was in warrant Article 31 that authorized the transfer of 41 acres, with four acres being carved out to transfer to the Care, Custody, Management and Control of the Parks and Recreation Department for use, to be used for the creation of a playground. Is that because the town meeting did so vote back in May of 2023 to transfer this property out, is that the warrant committee recommends a no vote having determined that the issue is moot?
Town's already, the town meeting has already authorized this.
Yes.
So no point in doing it again. Is that the recommendation of the warrant committee?
That is the recommendation of the warrant committee.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Let's have a town meeting.
Let's have a town meeting, yes. So here is your warrant. It's Monday, December 4th, 2023, at the Milton High School. We'll be there in person. It'll be recorded. Again, we'll be using electronic voting on most of the votes. And if you have any questions, you're welcome to email me at rhis@townofmilton.org. So Dave Humphreys, thank you for serving on the warrant committee and thank you to your committee, serving as a chair. And we'll see you all on December 4th.